All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Invite everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Ellie, would you call the roll?
Jim Dombek.
Here.
Steve Dawson.
Here.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Julie Davie.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Kristen Rann. Here. The board is present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Shiloh.
Yes.
Davie.
Yes.
DeVito.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Rann.
Yes.
Dombek.
Yes.
Motion carries.
This time I would like to convene the public hearing on the District 427 Fiscal Year '23 Budget and invite anyone who wants to speak to the budget to come forward. Records have reflected that no one rose to speak to the budget. If there is anyone who wishes to submit written materials commenting on the budget, now would be the time to submit them. Records have reflected no written materials were submitted. So I'll now close the public hearing on the Fiscal Year '23 District 427 Budget. Next item then is Audience to Visitors. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board this evening? If you would please rise.
Just right here.
Yeah, you can come forward a little.
Okay.
If you would state your name and address and you have three minutes after that.
My name is Dave Emmert. Christine Drive, Sycamore, Illinois. My wife and I have had a student in the Sycamore School District every year for the past 21 years. Three have graduated and our youngest is a senior. When we saw the date of the graduation was on the agenda for the last Board meeting, we were curious as to when it was going to be this year. In the past, it's always been on a Sunday, usually Memorial Day weekend, except for last year, when it was the Sunday before. We were interested to find out the date because if it falls on Memorial Day weekend, the senior track members typically are going to miss the awards night, graduation practice, and the senior dinner dance, which we're used to that. We never imagined that the senior track members are now going to miss their own graduation. Graduation on Friday, May 26th conflicts with IHSA Boys State Track Meet. Other teams that could also have competitions that weekend are Boys Regional Baseball, Girls Regional Softball, and Girl Soccer. After finding out of the date of the graduation, we watched the Board meeting when the Board members voted. On the webcast, the superintendent brought up the date, stated that the Convocation Center was not available on the Sunday of Memorial Day. The closest date available was Friday, the 26th, May 26th. There was no discussion, no questions. The Board members, no comment on any of the potential conflicts. The Board voted and the motion was passed for the 26th graduation. When finding out of the new graduation date, my wife and I, you know, my wife sent out an email. A couple days later, I sent out a second email to the superintendent, the principal, and all the Board members. My wife received two responses. I received none to mine. Now, I will say, I did get, I did reach out by phone to two Board members who were gracious enough to talk with me, and I did have two conversations, phone conversations with the superintendent, and I'm thankful for that. But as far as responses to my email, none. Some of the comments in my wife's emails that she received back were, one of them was, "I understand there are potential conflicts around the graduation date being moved to Friday. In fact, a quick look at the IHSA calendar for May shows, aside from Sundays, there are conflicts abound. If Sunday is the only day without conflicts, then it would be logical to consider switching the graduation back to Sunday at the Field House." Another response stated, "Due to the desire of the community to continue to use the Convos Center for NIU graduation, we are limited by the Convos Center's availability," which is true, and it's my understanding that part of the reason for this problem is the Convos Center is now limiting their graduations to two a day instead of about three or four, whatever they had before. Unless they change that, I don't think Sycamore is ever going to be able to get a Sunday at the Convocation Center going forward because those schools are locked in or don't get them. A response from another parent was, "Was there is ample time for the athletes to compete in the prelims, come back to Sycamore for graduation, and return to Charleston for the finals." This comment shows a complete lack of understanding and knowledge as to the mental and physical preparation that's involved in competing at this level. Traveling seven-plus hours back and forth would negatively impact their performance in one of the biggest events of their high school careers. We understand that people would like to have the graduation at the Convos Center, but would they still prefer to have it at the Convos Center if it means preventing students from attending their own graduation? The answer to this question is one of the topics that should have been considered before this vote. Board members were not made aware of any of the conflicts before they voted. This is what's really super frustrating. Apparently, the debate locking Sycamore in to this May 26th date, the contract was signed in June, not presented to the Board and voted on until September 13th. Apparently, there were some discussions between the superintendent, the principal, and the athletic director on potential conflicts, but apparently they were deemed acceptable, and at no point were Board members notified or discussed of with these conflicts. And then the vote occurred three months later. A concern in having it at the Field House is parents usually get a set number of tickets, but in the past years, families who have had extra tickets will give them to families who needed them. The graduation ceremony is also livestreamed for additional family members to watch. I think it's sad that students are going to have to livestream their own graduation just so families can invite unlimited guests to the graduation ceremony itself. We also thought having graduation at the Convos Center was going to be a great idea, not at the expense of having students have to miss it. We're surprised at the number of parents that we talked to who have experienced both Field House and Convos graduations that really disliked how the process was run at the Convos Center. I don't have time to go into that here, maybe some other parents can speak to that. We feel the decision to move the graduation to this particular Friday was made in haste and without all the information.
Thank you.
I'm going to finish up.
No, no, you're not. You had your three minutes, actually a little more. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board this evening?
My name is Nicole Carl, and I live on Lucas Road in Sycamore. I'm the mother of a senior track athlete who's excited to graduate and he's also proud to represent SHS as the top pole vaulter for the boys' track this year. I also have a junior track athlete who's excited to see his brother graduate and who's been looking forward to the track season since last year and has the goal of getting to state this year. It would be very heart-wrenching for these boys who work so hard to choose between graduating with their classmates or seeing siblings and friends graduate or heading to state to compete for track for SHS. Students should not have to choose between these two important milestones in their lives. I'm asking that you strongly think about changing the graduation to the traditional Sunday before Memorial Day. Even if NIU is not available, we can consider using SHS Field House as in the past years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the Board?
I will. I'm Jodi Golieski on Starfish Lane in Sycamore. The date and location for graduation doesn't allow for all students to participate without making huge sacrifices. The IHSA State Track Meet starts Friday, May 26th, and runs through Saturday, May 27th. The meet's held in Charleston, obviously way too far to travel back and forth. A suggestion of traveling back and forth is just unacceptable. These athletes representing Sycamore High School need to attend the track the way they've been trained. Coach Landon makes the athletes get up and walk around every hour at the meet so they don't get stiff legs. Sitting in a car for seven-plus hours would severely hinder their performance. Sycamore High School has a rich history of attending IHSA track, and I've been lucky enough to be there to see the 4x18 win state championship in 2021. The coaches, athletes, parents, and spectators, all cheering while proudly wearing their black, gold, white Sycamore Spartan gear. An awesome demonstration of school spirit, community pride, and support for the athletes and coaches who put in the time and effort to get them there. Now it's time for the same school community to stand up and support their high school athletes and change the date for graduation. I also have a 2020 graduate and a 2023 graduate. I have no clue what goes on because my 2020 graduate didn't have any of those experiences and activities. She graduated with a few friends in a backyard, and pictures were taken on the Sycamore grounds. Last year, I attended the 2022 graduation at the Convos Center of a family friend. The Convos Center is set up for the largest graduating school using the facility with rows and rows of chairs. Sycamore took only a small fraction of the space. At the end, the students and attendees were rushed out of the building to the parking lot, staff at the Convos swinging their arms to ensure all left immediately. The parking lot was where you went to find the student you were there to celebrate, not the football field, not the track, not the bell by the confession stand, or the tennis courts. Nothing resembled Sycamore. It was a ceremony where any name or any school could be inserted, not specific to Sycamore. Sycamore is known for its community. Yet last year, seniors graduated miles away at the NIU Convocation Center. And I thought it was just temporary due to COVID and not a tradition. Sycamore High School facilities and technology should be on display at graduation. I urge the Board to change the graduation date so all students can attend and move the location back to SHS where there's no conflict with other schools using the facility and the seniors can graduate from their actual high school.
My name is Sheri Emmert, and I live on Christine Drive in Sycamore. I might only take 30 seconds because I'm just going to finish a thought here. We feel the decision to move graduation was made in haste and without all the information being presented. We're asking the Board to put the date of graduation back on the agenda and consider moving graduation back to the Field House so all students can attend. One final note is earlier this year, the superintendent presented a theme or a key idea for staff members. It was "All Means All." Let's include all students in this year's graduation.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda. Because our agenda is laid out for us, we don't have time to discuss this issue right now, but I'm sure that there'll be some discussion of this in our open discussion session, which will come at a later time in the meeting. Next item is Communications, Correspondence, Informational Items. Letters and newsletters? Certainly had those out there. FOIA requests? No FOIA requests. That was pretty good. Suspension report. Any comments on that? No. At all.
Same typical.
What's that?
Same typical.
Committee reports. Okay. Next item then is Assistant Superintendent for Business Services Report.
Thanks, Jim. The first item that we have on the agenda tonight is the resolution for the final budget for this year 23. So I don't have anything new because we had a lengthy discussion of a tentative budget presentation, and so tonight I would just ask the Board to pass the resolution for the budget. And just as a reminder, this is just a snapshot of what the end of the year will look like, revenues versus expenditures for operating funds. So this does show a surplus of about $27,000. Again, nothing's changed since I presented the tentative budget in September.
So at this point, is there a motion to approve the Fiscal Year '23 Budget Resolution as presented? Still moved. Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Nothing's changed. No deficits. It's been moved and seconded, so roll call.
Davie.
Yes.
DeVito.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Rann.
Yes.
Shiloh.
Yes.
Dombek.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm going to ask Mr. Exum to come up here. Well, Mark's making his way up here. I just want to express my sincere gratitude to him. The last two summers, he's done about $18 million in construction projects, and this is both his and I's first time doing this, and he's amazing. So I just want to thank him for doing that for all seven of our buildings that have had work on it for the last two summers. So thank you to Mark. And then he's going to give the Board an update on what we did this past month.
So I tried to take everything in this and put it down to something simple for you guys. I had it there.
I totally had 15 minutes.
Yeah, told me I had 15 minutes. I said 45. Forty-five. So, you know, again, thank you, guys. We were able to do a lot in the last two summers. I'm glad to kind of have a summer off, though. I'm going to tell you the truth that, you know, with just my regular budget kind of dealing, because what we did in two summers around here was amazing. Our crew from the O'Shells McNutt is unbelievable, you know, being able between the seven buildings, keeping all these contractors going, between myself and Jim and having in there. If you don't know, a few other people out there, you know, we've got several Sycamore families that were on our crews working around. They were glad to be working in Sycamore for their jobs and having in as part of the contractors out there. So they knew our schools, they knew what to do, and they gave us the best effort that they could to give us the best buildings that we can get out of, you know, the money that we had for, you know. So we were able to get a lot done, as you guys know, though when we take a look at the 10-year plan, there's a lot more on there, but we were able to accomplish several things. So between Southeast and West, you know, those are the Mirimage Schools, the sister schools, as I always call them, and having in. And so we were able to, we had to replace two of the AC heater units up on top of Southeast, on top of that gym there for that one, so we got that done. We had to take a concrete patio out because of flooding that was going on at Southeast basement over there, and so they fixed a drain tile underneath of that and got that flowing better out to the creek than it sits on the backside of the property over there. And so they got a new concrete patio back there, new sump pump station put down in the basement. There's pictures that kind of go along with this, again, for the flooding. So when we got any rain over two inches, we had, you know, anywhere from 30 to 40 feet of water inside the cafeteria, into the art room, into the studio that's down there. And so then poor Tony would have to be cleaning that up along with district crews coming to help at times. So knock on wood, somewhere that we have not since this has all been completed since some of these big storms, no water in that basement. So those repairs really did help out big time over there with that area. Again, just upgraded 1950 stuff, you know, it was just old, the drains were old, needed to be gutted out, and putting concrete in the drains across and blasted so that we could get better flowage through there. We were able to put some new blacktop in and sidewalk repairs around the building and the teacher lot over there at Southeast as well. We were able to do some roof replacement at Southeast. There's still half the roof yet that needs to be re-coated over there. So anything that was wet when we did our roof scans, we were able to take out all that wet foam and then able to then use the Tremco product over top of those areas. We just did not have enough money, though, to complete the whole roof. And so we kind of went through, took a look at what we had for the money. Were able to get all the wet foam is gone. So every building roof has no wet foam anymore with the Tremco product, but they're not fully sealed. So it means that at any point in time down the road, they can still open back up in areas, and they're not under warranty, still had some issues down the road there. So that's something that we have to think about, that we still have roofs to finish at Southeast and West, and then we have major roof work still at the high school. So we were able to get some big projects, the big areas of the high school under control, but there's still many, many areas of the high school when we get to that part. Water fountains, then, we were short in some buildings after looking at the architect review in there and having in, so we were able to put in then these water fountains with the filling stations. So that was a nice addition in there because, as you know, many of the kids aren't using the water fountains as much anymore, and so they're using these bottles and they're filling up. The one bad part, Southeast is using so much that we had to help our storage tank for the reverse osmosis that we have. So all our water fountains in Sycamore are, they go through reverse osmosis, they're from Softwater City. And so they're all filtered water that they drink in Sycamore schools. Southeast is going through so much that they were actually running dry, so we had to put another 30-gallon storage downstairs so they had 30 more gallons to tap off of throughout the day and having in. And then as part of code, then, we put these backflow preventions in, and they're adds to the castrated closets. Remember, last year, we put the mixture valves at Southeast, so that was done as part of code last year and having in. West then had a tremendous amount of tuck pointing done to the whole outside. Again, Southeast had that done last year with the tuck pointing on it, the painting of the gym outside, which in Southeast had last summer the painting of the gym. So the two sister schools, then, when we take a look, then, they're getting a lot of the same things, we just reversed which year we were able to get it done there. Several, the curb work around West there, we were able to fix around that building. Again, the roof replacements, we got all the wet foam that was off of there. And then again, we coated half that roof, so again, half that roof sits, when you go up there, you'll see it's the old gray up there, and then the other half then is the white of the Tremco, white of their product and having in. Mixing valves then were added to the West classrooms sink, so that way, that meets the code for state then for that coming through. Castrated closets then had the backflow preventions added. We repaired the drain going down into the boiler room. They had water that was always leaking down there, past that boiler down there, so we were able to fix that drain down, then be able, again, to get the water out of the basement area there that was standing all the time after storms. Worked on patching the cracked steps, cracked sidewalks, and painting of all the railings again there for West. And so if you want to, whoever's looking, yep. So there's the new patio, that's the same patio, put the exact same thing. We took out from Southeast, we did put a drain in the middle, fixed the drain at the bottom of the steps there to the left. You can see then, we had to repair the brush from all the work that was done there as well with the landscape person coming in. This then is a complete roof then, so that is the EDM roof. And when we take a look at it there, that they were able to put on several of the spots in some of the buildings and having, and then that's, it looks a lot better. Again, they're not leaking now in those spots and having, so that's a nice sign there. Just to kind of show you, this is what happens to that roof that we have for the foam roof, these cracks form up there. And so from the time when we inspected the year before, that there was 50 new cracks up on, this is just at Southeast, and there's 55 cracks at West that we had to come back and fix. So that's why we can't kind of really push these roofs out too much further, that they're at their point, that they really do need to have this Tremco product put over top to really do that last sealing that goes across there and keeping the water out. So when this then cracks underneath there, if we don't get to it fast enough to be able to put the sealant on top of it there, then it cracks again, that's what then gets the foam wet. Once the foam gets wet, that's what starts dripping down inside the classrooms. And so we've been working hard on, you know, keeping these areas done, but they just pop up. I just can't believe how fast. I mean, we walked the roof one week, and the next week we found 12 more. So it just kind of, this summer with some of the heat really made these roofs kind of go. I mean, they lasted a lot longer than we ever thought when we put them on back in the day, but then they get to a point that they do need some TLC to keep them under control and keep them moving forward. And so then on your left then is the Tremco product, a pure white roof up there. On the right, you kind of see it's a gray product, that is the foam roof and having in. And so you can see then, this is what half the Southeast and half of West looks like when you take a look at it then, is that that needs to be finished. But you can see white patches in there, that's where the wet foam was at, that's where we repaired the wet foam, took that off, then took it out, then another four feet from that area to keep that from ever getting wet again till we have time to have the money to go across and put the Tremco product through there. So this is what the valves, we looked at then, that we were looking at for backflow prevention, these are the new valves that were put in there. This helps us prevent us from, when we're mixing up our chemicals that we put on our floors and use on our tables and everything else, from fighting back into the system is what this is for. So that's what that backflow prevention does inside these closets. So new piping in. Nice part is we got new piping in some of these old buildings from 1950s that needed some new piping inside there. There's the sump pump that we talked about, that got put down in the basement down there at Southeast, right next to that door that you go outside for recess, then we had to put a closet around it there so we can work on it there and having in, so the closet was built in there. The parking lots then that were done. There's again, another parking lot up on the roof then, you can see the two new Aon units that we replaced up there that were, that went bad on us, and so we were able to replace those, so we have heat and air then in that area of the school. Sidewalk repairs as we go through. So this one here then, we fixed underneath of that at West over there where it was crumbling underneath the sopit inside there, plus new windows that were leaking really bad. That whole top part there at West as well, down there by the gymnasium, it was, it leaked really bad inside the reading room. Many times, it would pour on you after a rainstorm, and so we replaced that whole section of the roof. So that was a whole complete replace and having in, so that was a nice feature in there. And so it stopped raining in that spot, which is what we were looking for when we fixed these roofs. Then the middle school here, so the middle school then got new bleachers in the gym. We hadn't had a chance, you know, so the old ones that were original in here are out, and so the new ones are in. They look nice inside, they've been used for several games already for volleyball that's been going on. After we were done, they were only going to paint two of the walls in the gym, but after looking at what the gym looked like, we were like, we paid the extra money then for them to give us to paint the whole gym. So the whole gym has a whole new recoat in there, so it looks really sharp inside that gymnasium when we take a look at it. You guys then also then put on the amendment that we had out there, so we took the bid for rooftop three then, because that was one out there. We had just, not as part of the regular bid, we had it as well in the amendments out there, and so you guys accepted that. So we did quit then air conditioning, finally got it working a week before it became cold. So it parts, just, we're supposed to be going first day of school, parts just, my summer has been parts, parts, parts not showing up, board's not showing up, parts that show up that are broken. So it's just been that kind of summer, we look at that kind of stuff there. New fabric socks then were added inside the gym, so if you used to seen the gym, you used to seen four air tubes or four metal tubes going across, they're blowing air into the gym. Now there's two socks that blow across and blow in the fresh air, so they bring in fresh air, they bring in air conditioning air now inside the gymnasium and also inside the middle school locker rooms as well. And then it will provide heat, you know, soon here, we'll turn the heat on in some of the buildings that aren't, two pipes. Fixing up the West wall here and stepping up cracks. So along this West wall here, we had some unique things going on with that wall, so we were able to open up, take a look at it. So there are some major repairs that we need to do, the West wall of this middle school that we need to look at. We did a fix of the areas that were the worst part. It was a five-year fix, so we got to look at, look at the architect firm to come up with a whole plan and how to fix this outside wall. So all the hangers that hooked the brick to the wall have all rotted off, and so they're no longer there for the stability that we need on this West wall. And it also then had stair stepping events, cracks inside each of these classrooms, who were able to go through and put in control joints in, and this was an added thing that we found. So this was all on top of our regular, this was just something that, we knew that wall needed to be worked on. When we opened it up, they were like, oh, we did a little bit more investigation, and so we fixed it to our spot, but we do have to look at some major repairs to this West wall of the middle school here. It's safe and sound, but it's just, it's something that if we don't handle it, it could become worse down the road. But we did then fix all the control joints then inside those rooms, stopped the stair staffing, cracking that was going along each of those walls and those windows, and it's just along this wall right here and having in. So it's something that we will have to investigate with the architect firm, then they come up with a plan and see how much money then will it cost us down the road in there. But it is something that just came up out of the plans that, you know, we knew one spot we had to fix, we just didn't realize how bad it was until we took the brick off the wall, and then we had to make it safe again, but then have to really come up with a plan. New water heater then was added inside here. There's electrical upgrades around the building, staff lounge, so that way they were running way too much stuff off of two circuit breakers, and so we were able to separate that off until six circuit breakers because they had, I think, four or five microwaves. There was just a lot of stuff in there when they all go into floors, all sorts of stuff. The stem lamp didn't have enough electricity in there, so we added some electricity to that lab as well. Again, backflow was added to the castrated closets, ventilation added to the server closet here, so that helped cool that down and keep it a little bit cooler in that area. We did some work on the ductwork around the library, it helped with the noise, it helped just a little, didn't really get rid of the noise. That noise has been there because the rooftops sit right up above it. So we are looking at some fixing of that more, of the units up above. main circuit board blew, then it blew a motor and then it blew another board and so we've been working with major companies trying to get it up and going, so we've got the parts in, N-Tech is gonna come take it over tomorrow, it's a Carrier product and Carrier tried coming out and fixing it and then just kinda said that they need to send another person out, so we've been using N-Tech services for a lot of our work out of the area and they, they're coming tomorrow to fix it and put it back online for us, so they'll be here. And again, again, it's nice and cool, so we don't have to worry so much about air conditioning, but we will need it right away, who knows what October's gonna bring us and having in and be ready then for next year. So I do apologize, of course, I'm a great teacher for going for two weeks in that warm, you know, rooms got seventy-eight, seventy-nine, up to eighty degrees at some days there, they will open up windows to try to bring in, you know, a little cool air from outside cause the days were seventy-eight, but that's what we see with equipment, the fine parts for anything right now, it, there's no longer something on the shelf two days later. We are talking six, eight, twelve, I have actuators that I ordered last November that open and close our valves for the heat that are still not in. So we have rooms at the spots in the round the district that they are a little bit warm in the winter because we have them cranked open a little, cause like, we don't want them freezing, I'd rather have room a little warm than a little cold because a cold room means a frozen univent, means that we have water all over, damage all over and as you guys know, it's a two-story building, you have water downstairs, water upstairs, it's just a nightmare, so. That's what we had at the middle school, again, just some progress, so there's the old ones, there's the new ones, when you see the bleachers. There's the new sock that was added across there, the two socks that blow all the air The wonderful water heater, there's the, you know, excitement for me is, you know, the chiller added, you know, that gets exciting, every few guys I know, not as exciting. You know, that's the part when we look at this, all this work that we're doing, we did all the ugly work that no one wants, that no one wants to pay for ugly, I mean, you can't go out and get asked for a referendum like this is what we have in the end, it's hard for people to understand this type of stuff, so when we take a look at what you guys were able to give us, this was for ugly work, this was for work that was needed on the buildings, that people aren't up on the roof seeing how beautiful they look, people are not up here taking a look at the new water heaters or looking at the chillers, but they enjoy the cool air and having in, so that's the exciting part, they were able to knock a bunch of this out of the ballpark then with it. Again, there sits the Dankin unit up there, again, you know, it was supposed to be a Carrier product, Carrier couldn't get us one anywhere in time, so then we moved the Dankin and then they went to go start up this Dankin, so this is the one running it, then the Dankin didn't start that day and so the Dankin then was just in a world of hurt and so they came back, replumbed some stuff on it, changed up a few compressors on a brand-new unit and then finally got it running, so it just blows my mind the amount of product that we're getting in right now that is not working right, right off from the manufacturer from quality control, so. But again, this was supposed to be a Carrier product, we subbed it out then for Dankin because Carrier was not gonna be anywhere near this year in, so we had to get a product up there to be able to turn on the air, but I'm gonna tell you, the Carrier product that sits right next door, it is now on uh, number five compressor of six and one year under warranty, so we're waiting on two more compressors to come in for that, cause two of them blew here in August and so thank God Circuit A stayed going, otherwise poor Jim would be hot because his area would get warm. Again, you know, motors, pumps, everything that was added up in the ceiling part to make water flow across the building, again, there's mixture valves that you're seeing added inside there along with the backflow prevention. There's that outside wall, we were able to tuck point for several areas, fix the areas in there that we saw that were the worst part of it when we're taking a look and through. Um, one part in the oxygen here, so where they had some structural concern about how it was attached to Billy, how it was cracking inside, there's way to put a structural beam inside that oxygen and so that's what that is there, when you're taking a look at it again for safety of that second mezzanine area that's up there, so they were just afraid structural wise that we had to put that in then for support and again, then it solidified, we solidified up that area. The rooms now that don't have the stair step cracking above the windows anymore that are right here next to us. The high school, oh, the high school. Right Tim, that's all we got? So we finally put some money into the high school this year, so we were able to go through and do several things, we did a bunch of tuck pointing around the high school, high school needed a lot of tuck pointing, there were areas I'm surprised that after this last winter that I'm surprised that were still on some of the corners, they kept on blowing out, we knew that the tuck pointing was coming and get that back under control, back under solid and having in. We were able to fix the flashing repairs along the oxygen, so we had those classrooms down there, they had always water dripping out along the insides, it was, again, we found when we opened up the brick, flashing was all bad, so that got all new flashing then along the oxygen wall then that prevents the water from coming inside those classrooms along that end and down into that hallway as well, because that one hallway had water pouring during rainstorms as well, it took you into the oxygen at the bottom of the ramp, so that has now stopped because of that as well. Uh, we were able to do the tennis court resurfacing, if you guys remember that was on last year's, never came out to get it done, added to this year, I wasn't sure if we were even gonna get it done this year because what, okay, they, I don't know. And so they just, yeah, they came out, started, then they found some extra stuff, so the tennis courts, we're gonna have to look at, the tennis courts will need a re, a complete redo, I mean, all the way down, taken down and rebuilt correctly with the right understructure in about five or six years. So we're gonna have to think about how are we gonna be able to get that tennis courts under control, we spent over, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to resurface tennis courts and I don't know if we're gonna get another five years out of them, we got four years out the last time that we got the product in there and it was in bad shape, it should have been done last year, it was in worse shape this year, so when they had to do extra work to get the tennis court surface ready, then to take the hard surface material that goes on top of it there and then we had rain days, then we had cold days and then we had to hurry up and try to get a camp in before, I took off then for Canada real fast to get a trip and I was behind for three years and I could thought I'd come back to it all being done, came back to nothing, they never came back, they left us and they said we have other jobs to go do, finally got them to come back in the middle of July and then they finally got it done for us there, a day before tennis started for the regular practice, so the poor tennis players, they had uh, not really good courts all summer to play their camp on, not to do their things on because it was halfway done and just waiting for that final product, it is a good product now, but it's something that, you know, when we take a look at again, I'm looking five years out and then, you know, it's about six hundred to seven hundred thousand to do a tennis court, so our size tennis court with everything that's out there, that's with no lights, six hundred to seven hundred thousand if we go today to put it out to bid, so there's some big things down the road that, you know, when we look at half a million dollars and it's not, you know, that's not an educational setting, that is something outside for a great sport that we have for our kids to be able to have that, that we have to think, how are we gonna be able to fund that because I only get about two seventy-five years, what I get out of your board budget to be able to repair things around the district, that will not cover that repair when we look at it there. Uh, we were able to add batting cages then over to the freshman sophomore field for baseball, they've been asking that for years over there, so we finally gave them a little something over on their side as it came in, we had the water heater replacement, you'll see why we had the water heater replacement, the nineteen fifties original one is amazing, it was a beast and, but it was at the end of life, so when they came to do the boiler inspector this year on it, they were only gonna give, they said after this year they would not pass it again because it was at the end of its life. Uh, but when we cut it open to be able to take it out to see how well it was built, it's a submarine that we had in there, it was unbelievably thick and what it did and so now we've got two high efficiency water heaters to replace it down there again, we weren't sure they were ever gonna come in because again, this stuff was all ordered in March and it was supposed to be in in June, then July, then August, then we got it in September, then one of them came damaged on the truck and so then we had to have big discussion with them about that to guarantee that it's gonna run and have that in and so uh, we were able to get that all situated and set then and going. Again, backflows added to the casoduo closets, uh, new rooftop units then uh, for air quality, so we were able to add that inside, so the agriculture classrooms then got uh, those rooftop units added because they were interior rooms, no windows, real poor air quality, so we were able to add those rooftops up there to get the fresh air inside them, we were able to add some rooftop units over again to the yellow wing over there, so the whole yellow wing of the high school now has, on the north side has air conditioning, we still have the boardroom, the attendance office and the cafeteria, the kitchen area for home economics, uh, that's still the one parts of the building that are not air conditioned. And then we have to think a little bit, there's nothing in the hallways for the yellow hallway, so you know, here you have these beautiful cold classrooms, but you still then go out into a wave of heat into the hallway, so fun to think about later on down the road is, you know, what do we do to be able to help balance that out a little better, cause it does make for the floors be a little bit slippery and we don't want kids to be slipping and sliding and getting injured on that. Then like I said, replaced the, the air conditioner, it was the band room, it's been out for ten years and so we've been able to not get the humidity levels right in the summertime over there and so it gets real humid and we have to have all these dehumidifiers in there to keep it from uh, getting so soupy inside there and so we found out that that air conditioner and they said, oh, it hadn't been running for at least ten years, so we took that air conditioner out, put the new one in and so that should have helped then uh, that helped with the boost of the air inside that area and so we were able to do that. Again, the roof recoat, we were able to do the blue hallway, which is blue teal, which is the nineteen ninety-nine edition of the high school, we were able to replace that whole roof up there and having in, uh, the yellow hallway, north side then, along that area that we did all the air conditioning, we took a bunch of units off of there, put units up and so then we also then did that whole area of the roof. Uh, the band hole area, so when you look at the band room and the choir room and the orchestra room, that, all that roof got redone as well and having. Uh, then we patched all the other wet areas around there, so again, there was about seventy-eight different areas around the high school that they went through and patched up there to get that all set, um, like I said, we still about sixty percent of the roof yet to recoat at the high school for future projects when we're looking down the road. And then like I said, yellow upgrade had twelve rooms then, we were able to get them uh, all updated, uh, fresh air inside then coming in better, air conditioning coming in there, uh, three of those rooms by the courtyard then were completely redone, uh, we are still waiting though on the boards, so uh, they have temporary white boards up right now, but again, white boards that we ordered in April still are not in yet, so the fish, final touch of those classrooms has not happened because we're still waiting for product to show up to be able to use that for those classrooms. Again, what the roof looked like then, that foam all scaled back there, so those were major wet areas that you saw inside there and having, we did add some new ladders to some spots that were unsafe up there, so new ladders were added throughout the project, so we have about four new ones of these across the district, cause the old ones were in really rough shape with us going up there for maintenance, we need, we need safety so we don't fall off these roofs, so we're gonna put new ladders up. Again, band room, all completely redone, then there's that Tranco product all across the top, so it does have the foam underneath of it, there's no uh, wet foam there, it's all dry and then it's the Tranco product all on top, so that's a roof that's got a twelve-year warranty then. Again, there's the brick layers up there that were doing all the tuck pointing of the corners, so they did a lot of work all around the high school this summer as you drove by and having, um, we cleaned up some pipe work around, so we had several areas of dead pipes and if you don't know, if you know about water, water and dead pipes is Legionnaires and we do not want Legionnaires at all, you guys read about in Illinois how it could cause several things, so we had several dead pipe areas inside the high school, we were able to get rid of those dead pipe areas around there with this plan and when we had the plumbers all in, so that is one nice function that we got rid of that, so that way we don't have to worry about Legionnaires disease uh, coming out by using the showers or washing your hands or anything like that, because what we had for some dead pipe areas that were just left over from different projects, just kinda capped things and left it, no one thought much about it, but in the last five to ten years, a lot of us, when we start looking at plumbing, we look for the dead ends and how to cut those dead ends out and so this is one of those spots, this had four or five different areas coming all down and just kinda the water stead there or stayed there and that's dead and then come that bad way. Again, you can see the product then what it looks like when it's all done there and having, you can see the flashing work there on the side. Interior classrooms completely taken out, these classrooms over here had those old metal grid ceilings, so they were all completely taken out, then this type of ceiling dropped in with the nice LED lights then dropped in inside as well. And again, you can just see the what we did to the walls, kinda taking everything apart, everything off. There's the batting cage out at the baseball diamond. And then this is what the classroom looks like afterwards then when we're done, again, sorry, the right-hand wall does not have up the, you know, bulletin boards and everything that you see on this, that that's still waiting to come and have there and so uh, but they all got the univents in, they all have the air conditioning in there and so that's something that the yellow wing's really been looking for for many years. Again, all the work up through the ceilings and having in, again, thanks to the high school crew because, I mean, of course Tim, I didn't go talk to him the week before, I knew he'd be frightened because the hallways, we would be right before you walk down the hall, it's like, there's no way school's gonna open, there's just no way, this place is a mess and so, I mean, we had the whole yellow hallway, all these ceilings all open, all this pipe work going through and having in and then that high school crew worked their tails off then, that once they gave us, they gave us ownership of the building, um, about eight days before school started. Our crews came in that night, worked overtime whole weekend, worked all weekend to get these whole walls flat, uh, wax sealed, ready to go, all through and then they worked the whole next weekend with overtime hours, so that way when the kids came, the teachers came in, that the building was ready on that Friday and so things looked great for them, but I tell you, it, it, what a mess, what a mess, I mean, that's all I gotta say, anytime we do construction, you see a lot of work done right at the end, but then they really bring in the crews then to help clean up all this mess so that we can be able to turn it over to us so that we can make it ready for kids. Again, you can see all the things that we did inside there, so the actual brick work, all the old steam heat that used to be in these rooms are all removed out of there and then we put in all the new univents, so steam heat went along that whole wall, so they took all that metal out of there, of course then there was asbestos in that floor area there that was never baited, so then they had to bait the asbestos, asbestos out of there. Uh, the sopet area then was just ceiling tile leaning inside those classrooms, so we made it solid uh, sopet as it goes in, so it looks crisp as it goes through instead of putting ceiling tiles back in. We were able to fix then the ponding that was going on down at the bus barn area, so after rainstorms and after snow, we had up to uh, about fifteen buses were underwater down there, three to four inches in the wintertime, they actually freeze in spots down there. Uh, my first year we, we had three workman comp issues because down there, because the water stuck around and froze and people slipped on it, one broke a wrist, one had concussion, the other one had a concussion, so I mean, we had to get this and so again, got it all fixed up, it really drains off beautiful down there right now and so we were able to do it with a simpler fix by changing up just a few things, where we didn't put the drain in, we just changed up and put the, the concrete in and then changed a little bit more of the angle, so we saved with this project about seventeen thousand dollars by uh, looking at some things, taking advantage of things, opened up that tile a little bit more off of the side there and so saved some money in that part. So there's the new boiler then, that there's two high efficiency water heaters, there's the beast that it got replaced, so that's what they had inside there, so that is the original water heater of the building when it was first built and it, it did its purpose, it like I said, it was, it's thick, it's big, it's just not efficient, not efficient, like I said, it was at its point that the boiler inspector was not gonna inspect, that was not gonna pass it anymore for safety reasons, that it could blow at some point in time later on, they were just worried, but we got it out of there, it's gone now and now we have two high efficiency ones inside there in that room, that's down by the egg shop is where that beast is hidden. Then the high school decided to do a little boom this summer, uh, so we made it through track season barely. Uh, the lights, if people tend to know that we just barely were able to get the lights on down there for stadium lights and everything, because for the last ten, twelve years, anytime it got really wet, power would go out at the fieldhouse and so what we found is that when the wire was installed back in the time that they nicked it in several areas and so when water got inside there, it actually created, yep, it blew and then we weren't able to get um, the wire out, so we had all Swedberg out, our crews were out there, we tried our darndest to get that wire out to be able to use the original um, underground tunneling that was there to be able to run new wiring, we just couldn't get it done, so we had to bring in an outside company then to run new wires from the fieldhouse to get the lights all running, get the tennis courts running, get the press box running and that all now runs underneath and we added the new spot there on the side over by the food service and ran that new line in there and then Swedbergs worked their tails off then to run wire, uh, wiring all through side the fieldhouse over to the switch closet where the main power comes in, so this was an unexpected repair that came out of my money this summer because we weren't expecting it, I've been told about it, I kinda see it in the spring at times when it's wet that it wasn't there, but then when we couldn't get things to keep going after season was done, I kept on going out trying to start up everything and everything, it just, it was blowing a big, the major breaker and so we had to bring in Swedbergs and they were great and they helped us get this finally fixed, so we have power out there, it should be good to go for many years to come and again, we took the area that was easiest um, to get to, it wasn't the cheapest area because then we had to have all electrical run the other way, but if we ran this underneath of where the stair steps go up inside the fieldhouse, there's water lines under there and the guy that does it just couldn't guarantee, couldn't hit it and if you hit the water lines underneath the concrete, we're gonna show you what that looks like at North Grove when we come up. So North Grove did a crazy two this summer, so yep. So this was a planned one, so that was the walk-off areas that come in, all the water that sits inside there then causes that concrete to all bust out and crack along the side, so talking with Weaver Construction, we decided that we're gonna take that out, so then we took out that uh, walk-off area, we're gonna put carpets on there all the time to walk up on there, but because of how this design was, it just had the concrete busting up and so uh, we looked at the safety reasons why we went to putting that all back to concrete and so that is all back to polished concrete down there in the fieldhouse area, you can tell just a little bit different color inside there and having, but again, we did that for safety of coming in the building, since the fieldhouse has a lot of people coming in and out of it. North Elementary then, um, that back playground, we were able to get it out and removed and having in, it didn't that require as much work as we were thankful for, cause we thought it may require a little bit more, they did a few unique things to it there, they did till it up a little bit, it dried out the clay a little bit to get to where it needs to be and then just a little bit of backfill was needed to be able to get it to its point to be able to put the blacktop back down and having, we did reduce it by uh, thirty feet, so it's not thirty feet, it's thirty feet shorter than what it was before to save some money and save some costs with that, with that back playground, uh, we were able to uh, replace the rooftop unit on top of the teachers lounge, but it's still not working, so it's waiting on a part that needs to get it to run there, so the poor teachers at North, again, some of you are back there, so sorry that your lunches have been a little warm and having in because that teachers lounge uh, unit were waiting again on parts that came in, the part was not working and we've been waiting since the end of July on that part, so hopefully it comes in soon, the nice part is now that we're a little cool, we don't have to worry about that as much. Asbestos, there's a ton of asbestos in the halls at North, so we got rid of all that, so the hallways are asbestos-free at North Elementary and having in, um, entries into the classrooms then we were able to get that done as well, there's still some tile inside those classrooms there, cause um, the bids came in too high for us to be able, remember we're gonna reduce some of those classrooms and then we're gonna take out all the asbestos in the classroom and it's again, it's in those nine-by-nine tiles and the mast stick And it's again, it's in those nine by nine tiles and the mast stick inside there. So there's still some asbestos inside North, inside some of those old tiles. And then inside the cafeteria tiles as well at North. But we did get all the hallways. Uh, it removed, new flooring installed, um, new hallway display boards. They are on back order. So the hallway display boards are not in yet. So when they're done then, that project will complete. Uh, they got three new water fountains there at North with the bottle fillers added around the building. And so again, when we did the study, they found out that they were three water fountains short. Again, they're inside the cafeterias and you'll see what they look like here in some photos there. Again, back flows. Uh, tuck pointing around the building was done, mixture valves, uh, concrete repair of the sidewalk on the south side of the building where everyone's dropped off at North Elementary in the mornings. Uh, new exterior door to the gym because we could not open it up for fire. And so they added a new door there. And then we, uh, we, for my district crew, we added LED lights to cafeteria. After we did the cafeteria work last year, I couldn't stand the old looking lights inside there. So we did put in new LED lights. So you'll see a photo of what that looks in scene. There's the new flooring. We did put a little color inside there, a little brown to kind of show where classrooms were as you kind of go down. So interior design people did some great jobs on that because I would've never done that. I would've just put pure white all the way down. And it says, there it is. But they did a great job. Some great colors to kind of bring up, you know, as you guys know, North has those wonderful brown brick. It's hard to try to lighten that up. So this does provide some light inside there and coming in. And so it does, it looks really nice down along that way. So again, that main hallway, when you come down, you'll see it there and that goes down the cafeteria the same way. There's the new LED lights that we put inside the cafeteria. Uh, they are dimmable. So you can dim them down if they ever want to show a movie or anything inside there as well. And having, but that kind of did the final touch after we did all the repairs inside there, then painted all the ceilings, painted all the walls. We don't have yellow yucky old lights up there anymore. So that's nice. Yep. Yeah. And this is what it looked like ahead of time there with all that removal of the asbestos. Again, they did a heat lift then, then put, you know, safety for the asbestos workers to get that out of there nice and fast. And then you can see that wall then that they're adding the piping in there for the water fountains. There's three water fountains, Papa Bear, Mama Bear, Little Bear. So that way they're all set. None of them I can still use because they're not at my level. So, okay. And then you can see a nice walk off carpet that we also added then after talking. Nicole said that because people were slipping off there from the kindergarten teacher, that she would like a little bit larger. So we just put a whole walk off carpet longer inside there for safety reasons. There's the walls on the inside that are waiting for the boards then to be added there. So display boards are gonna go across there to kind of lighten up that hallway, to kind of take again, a little bit of that contrast of those darker walls, try to lighten it up a little bit. Outside tuck pointing then, a bunch of tuck pointing work at North. There's the back. So this is what it looks like with the laptop gone. There it is with a new laptop on top. South Perry then had parking lot upgrades to half the lot. So we were able to save half that lot. Had good, had good asphalt. So we took the bad side and repaired that. The other part then we did reseal then. So that way we get longer life of it on there. We were able to do some roof work up there. We had 200 square feet of wet foam that got removed and coming in. Um, we did have a bad windstorm come through and so it, we'll show you what it did to the roof on top of the cafeteria. So we were able to fix that while we had the roofers here on property. So they fixed that real fast. Again, that wasn't part of, of the plan, but it happened because of a storm that came through and us being able to have them there and fix it. Uh, we were able to take out the bad sidewalk removal and installation and put in better spots in there. A new blacktop on the pla- back playgrounds, uh, the delivery area got new blacktop. Uh, we added a roof hatch because that's the only building that had no access to the top. So we always had to run to the high school to get the ladder, to get up on the roof to check anything out. So we were able to find a storage closet outside to put a roof latch up there. And that's gonna make that much better for us to be able to get on that roof and repair things that are needed. And then we were able to remove a bunch of the old stuff that when you guys did 2008 work, we were able to remove all that stuff out of there then that that was left behind. So we were able to use this advantage to get rid of a bunch of stuff, to clean some stuff up. So that's one of the things that we've been looking at is that a lot of our products that we've done around here, we leave, we abandon in place. So we were able to take several things out. Unfortunately, there was a few things at the high school. I, I, I really wanted to take some stuff. We found these old skylights in the hallways of the high school when we opened up the top. These big old skylights. We just, we didn't have the money to take it out. And I didn't want to spend the money on that. I want the money on roofs and I want the money on the classrooms. And so we left those skylights. I mean, if they've been hidden for all these years, I never knew they were there. And having, and Tim, do you know that there's skylights hidden up there? I didn't know that there was, yep. I had no clue that they're hidden up there. So they're big. They're big skylights and they're all tucked away, but it'd been nice to open it up. But hopefully, who knows, maybe next Monday, maybe I'll still be here to get rid of them and see them. Again, concrete work, roof hatch. Fixing of the blocks along the way. That's for the early childhood entrance over there. We fixed the concrete along that side. Did some tuck pointing. Yep, concrete. That's what the roof looked like after a major rainstorm. Blew off that top part in there and having in. So we're able then to fix that roof on top of the, it's on top of the cafeteria area is what that roof is at South Perry and get that back tuck pointed all back in and all nice and tight and watertight. So. North Grove then, we did add backflow prevention to the custodial closets. We had a couple areas in the kitchen that were heaving and somehow the adhesive that they used just heaved up. We thought we had an underground water break there and so that it was not the part. So it saved us money in the end that we just had to scrape down the product and then put new tile down. And so that was a good thing. The, we pared the underground water drainage across the driveway where the buses come across. There was always water going across there. So we figured out what happened over there and they fixed that drainage issue. And then, um, put new blacktop in. So that way it wasn't eroding that part of the driveway coming out. Then we did have emergency repairs to a broken pipe that, um, has been broken for, 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 they said five, six years over there. It would catch, uh, you use the wipes and when you flush them down the toilet after you use enough wipes, it would catch and then backflow all the sewage and stuff into the hallway, second grade classrooms all down that end. So after ECE, uh, or after summer school with special ed, that day when they finish up the next day, we had water all over the second grade hallways there. And so it all back flowed up again, all over the areas. And so at that point, I kind of told Nicole, we're gonna pull the gun and we're gonna fix this. So you're gonna see what happens when we fix a major break inside concrete. And then we fixed up some concrete sidewalks and, uh, changed dumps area from blacktop to concrete because it was falling down so much. That was a hazard. Um, it was a major tripping hazard when the custodians were going out to, uh, throw garbage out there and also for the dump truck to keep on falling into. So we made the concrete so it stayed. Again, mixer valves. There's the inside of North Grove. All that concrete, all cut out, all that work to fix that pipe down at the bottom there that had to break inside of it. So major break, major work. I just, yeah, that was not expected and coming in again. Some of our, uh, our insurance picks up the concrete part of this. So the insurance will pick up about half the cost of this repair for us, but the rest of it then they will not, um, in coming in. So we were able to recoup some of that in there. But that was a nightmare. I mean, we had, we had electric excavators inside. So it didn't put any pollution inside the building, digging, dugging out, digging out stuff, cutting concrete. I mean, impressive work, but boy, for the building, you know, as you know, North Grove's our newest building. And to see all this work going on is kind of heartbreaking too at the same time and how much stuff we cut. But in the end, then you're gonna see what happened in the end, how great it looks. So there it is. Again, patch back up, all the concrete weight in the pier. There's that outside one where we repaired the drainage underneath out there. In the parking lot, there's the new stuff. So my friend, Mr. Vince, did amazing job. He, uh, he, he redid all that. We didn't have to call in the outside company to come do the tile work. So he did this all. So this was all in-house work. And so when you come in, you'll just see a little bit different. You'll see that the new tile is new and it's a little whiter, not as yellow as the other tile because of the wax on it. But you, you have to look really hard to see that we did that repair inside that hallway. And again, thanks to my great crew that I have, you know, I've got some great guys at work. And he came right in and he patched this all in, got it all set. And then it came this North Grove crew then to put the wax on top of it. And, you know, people wouldn't know if you didn't see these photos that we did this kind of work during the summertime. And a, uh, basically a 12 day period is what this was done in. Concrete work outside there at South, at North Grove. Again, this was all cracking and heaving. And then it was pushing up on the doors. So the doors wouldn't be able to open. So we took all that concrete out and then redid that. The, so we were able to get inside those doors on that side. All right. And that is me speaking a hundred miles a minute. Yes, yeah. So, yeah. So a lot of work, a lot of stuff in there. Again, thanks to you guys for all your guys' support with that. Um, we're in a lot better spot than we were two years ago with everything, uh, because of all this extra work we've done. Um, you know, there are several things that we look at out there. We've got the fire alarm that we gotta look at the fire alarm panels at the high school that are slowly dying on us. Intercoms are going out. So the southeast intercom went out. And at right at the end of the school year, again, parts are obsolete on it. So you have to put a whole new intercom system in because it won't work without those parts inside there. So North and, um, West have the same intercom system. It's just a matter of time before theirs goes out. High school, we have to think, high school intercom system is, I don't, the, the computer is probably the same age as Tim. So it's an apple in there playing, uh, having, so.
Oh, Tim's not even here to listen to that one.
And having, but it's an old computer that runs the bell system. It runs the intercom to the safety. Again, it's a safety feature that we have to talk about to be able to talk to the rooms, rooms, be able to talk down to the front office. They ask for help for nursing that needs to come down. If there's a situation inside the classroom, they can call and talk to the front office area. So those are some things that are, they're at the end of their life that we need to think about how are we gonna get that uh, fixed and going again. You can't believe that, you know, about 400 to 500,000 for a fire alarm system for a high school. Again, about 200,000 to get the wiring up, what we need to do for the speaker system, be able to put the new speaker system in at the high school. Um, elementaries are less, they're about 35,000 to 40,000 to put in a whole system. So it was, uh, uh, 31,000 to put in southeast this summer. And as costs go up, that's why we just kind of see those coming up that way. So we've got some things to talk about for my area down the road and how are we going to be able to fund it and keep some things going with the amount of money that we have. So. Thanks for your time as always. Any questions from anyone here? I talk a thousand miles a minute. So.
I was excited about it.
Yeah. I knew you would be, yeah.
Glad we got it all done. And I assume we're gonna come back at some point and talk about the next level of priorities. And, you know, how that aligns with what money we don't have.
Yeah, we still have about seventy million dollars at the high school. Just the high school loan. So, yeah, what we're talking about. Opportunities.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
We're gonna talk solar. Um, I'm gonna talk, but Mark jumped in and, um, if I miss anything. So, um, we had talked with the board back in February about the possibility of looking at solar panels, um, on our schools. And when it came down to it, the middle school and high school were the only two opportunities that would generate enough savings um, to actually do the solar panels. So we were working with a company, um, Forefront Power. And they did a presentation, uh, to you guys, um, during that meeting in February. And, um, Mark and I have been working with Anna for, gosh, probably almost a year now.
Yeah, yeah.
And just really trying to utilize the spaces, um, on top of, of the buildings. But then looking at, um, how that's gonna affect roofing, um, projects that we have to do in the near future. Especially since we just, we did a lot of the roofs, um, here and at the high school. And so when it came down to it, uh, financially, it was not gonna make sense for us to pursue those opportunities. So what we did with Forefront is we looked at, uh, possibly doing ground mounts. And again, the only school that would generate enough savings and had enough space to do ground mounts would be here at the middle school because we own the property, um, adjacent to here. Um, and so Mark was speaking, uh, with the city at that time. And, um, there's nothing out there now that says that anyone within city boundaries can do ground mounts. And that, uh, from what we understand, the city was not close to passing anything to allow that to happen. Um, and so when we heard that from them, and again, just knowing it wasn't gonna make sense for us. We weren't gonna end up saving any money, um, with having the, the rooftops. Uh, we decided to part ways with Forefront and maybe look at other opportunities. And a couple of months ago, um, we had a company reach out to us, um, 11 Million Acres. And, um, they wanted to discuss community solar. And so I get the email and I send it to Mark. I was like, all right, this is, this sounds too good to be true. Um, because there's no equipment, there's no cost to you, you only generate savings. So. Um, so Mark and I had a meeting with them and I provided you guys, um, their presentation here. I'm not, not gonna go through slide by slide, but you guys have it in your board packet. Uh, but just wanted to talk about what's the difference between community solar and then, um, rooftop and ground mounts. Where the district's actually essentially leasing the equipment that you have, um, on your property. So, um, community solar, this is actually the first time in Illinois that larger customers are able to, um, participate in community solar. And so this is, this is kind of new to school districts in the state of Illinois. Uh, currently they're working with, um, 16 different school districts and, um, we're one of them that they've reached out to. And so what this program does is, um, it allows the customers to receive a portion of their electricity generated from a new solar source at no cost. Um, so community solar farms are shared by multiple customers. And then provide the opportunity to share the benefits of solar power. It provides a guaranteed savings. There's no investment. There's no maintenance by the school district. Um, there's no installation of equipment. Really, you're just supporting the state of Illinois and their renewable, um, energy goals. So what we did is we sent all of our current, um, electricity bills to, um, the rep that's working with 11 Million Acres. And they did a synopsis for us so we could see what kind of savings we're looking at, if, you know, if it makes sense for us. Although knowing there's no cost to the school district at all. There's no equipment that we have to worry about. Um, not having to worry about having things up on our roof. So they generated, um, a synopsis for us. The difference between the community solar and the rooftop and ground mounts are, um, community solar is for 15 years versus 25 years um, with the solar panels. And so, um, looking at the savings, it would be about forty-five thousand dollars in annual savings. And then multiplied by the 15 years. So it'd be close to about seven hundred thousand dollars in savings for the district that we would see, um, on our electric bills going forward. Um, when we were working with Forefront Power, again, that was 25 years. We were at about a 1.8 million dollar savings. But again, with the cost of the equipment that we were gonna have, it was actually not any savings at all. Um, so, uh, we talked with them. The, the first step that we had to do was to just, um, agree for them to look at our, our, um, bills and just to kind of move forward with that. So it's, you're not hooked on anything. It's just to have conversations with them. So Mark and I met with Derek, um, from 11 Million Acres, talked with him. Um, and so we said that we would be bringing this to the board to have conversations with tonight. And then depending on the direction that you guys would like to go, um, you know, then we can move forward with working with the attorneys on looking at, um, agreements and stuff like that. So, um, I'll give you an example that they gave me because I just wanted to make sure I was wrapping my head around this. So they gave the example that, say, your comm ed bill currently is a hundred thousand dollars. Your solar credits delivered are 10%. So let's say ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um, your comm ed bill would now just be, um, two thousand dollars. So you, we would receive an invoice from Arcadia is the company that, um, fills through 11 Million Acres um, for 90% of the credits because the district gets to keep 10% of that. So we would get a bill for eighty-eight thousand, two hundred instead of the a hundred thousand dollars. We would still have that two thousand dollar bill from comm ed. Um, so instead of paying a hundred thousand dollars total, we will pay ninety thousand, two hundred. So we would save ninety-eight hundred dollars in that month scenario. And then come on the net going forward. So just wanted to have some open discussion tonight on questions that you guys might have. If Mark and I can't answer it, we can move out to our rep and get those, um, questions answered. And if it's something that the board is interested in, um, pursuing.
So what have you been doing for 15 years?
So you're able to, um, resign with them as long as the solar farms are still in place? Um, and then resign for another 15 years? We asked if we could do, um, shorter increments. And I think they said 15 was probably the shortest that we would, that we would do with them. Um, instead of the 25 years with the solar panels.
What's the advantage to them for that?
They, they have to, um, work with, uh, the government agencies or school districts in order for them to receive.
They're collecting government money.
Yeah, they're collecting government money. So in order for them to get their 90%, they have to work with other, um, entities that can, um, I guess, allow them to be able to even partake in this.
And do we know other districts that are working with them?
We did not get a list.
No, we did not get a list. Like I said, this is just, like, this email came out and we looked at each other like, here's a chance for us to have solar power run our schools without having solar power ruining our roofs and losing money in the end. Because we have to take the solar panels off our buildings twice to reco-roofs during that timeframe. And by the time you take them all off, put them back on, then take them all off, put them back on, we'd actually lose money by putting solar panels on our buildings. Here's a chance for us to do good for the environment, use solar, get the savings. Again, they're doing a lot of the paperwork again, getting the government money on there and going through all the piles of paperwork. We get a savings off it. They're making their money off of that part then from the government incentives. And so that's why we're looking at a 15 year and then hopefully 15 years from now, maybe better incentives and we may actually save more. Or it could go away. But I tell you, the way people are trying to put up solar farms all around, I think that we will see more of it come down the road, you know, as we, as you drive around, just look at them popping up all over, you know, there's three acres, five acres, 10 acres. And so.
So they're, they're in the example that you gave. So there, in the example that you gave, is that a set amount? It's always that amount every year? Does it adjust that if our power bill is a hundred and twenty thousand two years from now?
Yeah, no, it adjusts.
Yet percentage adjusts with that?
Yep.
So we would, we would be paying that same ten percent, percentage?
Yep.
And they would adjust their amount so that it's, it's current with where we're at?
Yep.
It's not, you're locked in for fifteen or whatever. Why does that sound to me?
That's what I said to you, Steve.
I know. That's, I mean, yeah, we looked at each other and kind of, but it just makes you wonder what incentive from government are they really? Because there's some things like through ComEd, you know, we really get some rebates from just upgrading our stuff around. The amount of paperwork to get that rebate, it's like, whoa. Once you pull them out and kind of understand, then it's, it's better and better. But, you know, M-Tech really helped me do a bunch of that work this summer, because they're like, Mark, we fully, he's out all the time. Let us come up, sat down with me, help me. Because I looked at some of the stuff like, oh, what in the world are they, they're asking for this, this, this. Let's get this. Let's grab a snapshot here and having in. And then when we're done, you know, we got a twenty-seven thousand dollar check from ComEd just for doing work that we were going to do. It's upgrading our systems and twenty-seven thousand last year, we'll get another, you know, check for about twenty thousand this year from ComEd. And again, it was just because they knew how to do the paperwork, and that's what they know how to do to be able to get that done efficiently, get it done. They make the money off of it. We get some savings on top of it. And again, we don't have to worry about stuff up on our roofs, because if we've put stuff for twenty-five years, then it'd be okay. But our roofs are still, we're twelve-year mark, twelve, fifteen years, and we can't, we can't do, we can't do that. Our roofs just can't handle it, even though they said they can. But I'm like, no, we have to take them off twice. And they didn't want to talk about us taking them off twice. They went, well, maybe you'll take it off once. But I'm like, after seeing what these roofs do, I'm like, we can't, we just can't. We can't, we can't do that.
On top of that, if you get a big windstorm, you're going to have your own issues, because they're not asking, not using the weight down.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
I would be interested in seeing who they are working with, how long they've been working with them, and what their experience has been with them, as far as their credibility.
And I, I think it's, it's pretty new with school districts, so, but I will get the list of those.
Or other government agencies. It doesn't have to be a school district.
Yep.
I think Illinois has only been running this program for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And it's my understanding with all these S-Racs, all these renewable energy credits, which is what the state is basically incentivizing people, right? They're saying, put the solar on, and we will basically buy. And I believe they're fifteen-year increments, which is probably why this is fifteen years. But they're basically prepaying you for fifteen years' worth of, of electricity. And then you're on the hook for whoever installed them to actually generate the amount of electricity they prepaid you for. And I think everybody else is somewhat getting billed for that energy. If you look at your ComEd bill, there's a renewable energy line on there that you're paying a few dollars a month into, so.
Call the tech.
Yeah. I would be curious to just know more from the guaranteed standpoint. So are they just promising a spread over whatever ComEd's current rates are? Because as a homeowner, I can figure out, you know, my electricity costs are going to zero. I can make up some assumption about what I'm going to save, but ultimately, I know I'm not paying any bills going forward. But if we're locking in for, just to quote, buy our electricity from somebody else for fifteen years, how do we know that, how they worded it such that, because the, the presentation just says savings up to ten percent. Your example was exactly ten percent.
Yeah, guaranteed savings up to ten percent versus the grid.
Up to ten percent?
Yeah.
So is it, could it be zero?
Or three?
That wasn't my understanding, but.
I know. Good question to ask them. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, good question.
That's all. I mean, ultimately, if it's a dollar, I don't see the downside, because it hasn't obligated us to do anything.
Correct.
And we've saved a dollar. And if it's saving a hundred thousand dollars, that's even better. But I would just be curious to know.
It would be good to know.
Yeah. I don't know what other opportunities we're really giving up, other than trying to negotiate with some other electric provider, or I guess maybe that's it. If you're signing a fifteen-year contract, are you giving up the flexibility that in two or three years, there's some other venture that says, well, we'll sell you electricity at this price, but you're, you know, like, when I renew my natural gas contract with whomever, and I've signed up for three years of my.
Yeah, they did talk about insulation in here, but.
So I'd just be, just be curious relative whatever ComEd's, you know, published rates are. Are they promising a discount over that every year? Or, or how does that, are they just making assumptions about how fast it's going to escalate over the next fifteen years?
Yeah. And just for reference, our electric bills have doubled in the last couple of months. So, I mean, I, I think anything we can do to generate some sort of savings is an advantage to us. But I can reach out to them and follow up with these questions, and then I can pass along that information to you guys.
Do you think they would come and do a presentation?
I think the, the same way Anna did, I think they comes in.
Yeah, I thought you'd like to zoom in, yeah.
Yeah, we did a Zoom meeting with them, so that's how, yeah. Yeah, so just kind of.
That would work.
Mm-hmm. But like you said, yeah, it seems to be good.
You know, we can ask questions as we learn.
Just a quick question on this. So I, from like a, in terms of like the solar option just being off-site, I think that was a really great idea to address this as opposed to doing it onsite. So I think there's clear benefits to that. I think it does, though, bring an interesting point, like what Eric was talking about, weighing what the alternative is. So like, our district's obviously going to be paying a little bit more for solar than we would for a less expensive fixed rate electrical option from some other means. So I just, I don't know how much work is involved in weighing the non-solar option, but the fixed rate piece, because like you're talking about, right now, for, you know, buying energy through ComEd at a variable rate, it's going up like crazy. But if we go and we sign a three-year deal for fixed rate with a certain energy provider.
And, and we do do that, and we're part of a consortium too.
Consortium?
Yeah, we're in the Illinois Energy Consortium through IASBO. So we do get a fixed rate, and we typically do sign a three-year contract.
Okay. So wait against that, this looks more attractive?
Yeah. And so we would, we would still be a part of them also, because you're still getting your energy with ComEd also. It's just the credits are going towards that bill. So, yeah.
I mean, these credits are some weird virtual currency. It's really a weird system.
Okay, yeah, we'll reach out to them and see if they can give a presentation. That's all I have to.
Thank you. Assistant Principal, give it to her.
Thanks, Jim. I'm going to ask Jim Clavitt, principal here at the middle school, to introduce our next speakers, who will talk slower than Mark Daxremus. They're here to talk a little bit about SEL and some great things going on here, so.
It'd be tough to follow, because I do believe Mark issued more words in his presentation than I have you called calendar here, and he did in thirty minutes. So I'll, I'll see what I can do here. We've asked you, been asked to do a little presentation on how we started the year off. We did something a little more innovative than we've normally done. We, we followed the books, Significant Seventy-two, and it's about, by Greg Wilcott on building relationships. And it all started because last year, we finished the year working with the ROE, doing our trauma responsive schools. And we did our assessment, our implementation assessment, to find out where we're good at, what we really need working on. One of the things that really came out is we could really work on relationships. And so we did a presentation, we're going to have a presentation on that. I don't want to steal their thunder, so here's a.
Sarah Frank, which is the assistant principal, and Mrs.
Herkler, who is also an intern for us this year for an admin internship.
It's true, I am. I'm Elizabeth Herkler. I feel like you probably know Sarah, but you might not know me. This is my fifth year at Sycamore Middle School, my thirteenth year as a school counselor, though. Middle school's really my jam, so this is where I like to stay. All right.
So thank you so much for allowing us to come and talk to you tonight about SEL here at the middle school. I was thinking back to when I was going through my undergrad program twenty years ago-ish and thinking that, you know, I was so obsessed with like how I was going to use length and hues as a primary source in my part of Renaissance lesson. And, but when I got into the classroom and I realized middle school was, you know, the place for me, yeah, I realized that it's really about the relationships you build with kids. And I am, I still do love history, but what I remember the most is the community I built in my classroom. So if we go to our next slide, thank you. So why SEL? Why does it matter, and especially now more than ever? I also want to make a plug for our new therapy dog, Dooley, who is with Officer Pearson now at the middle school, our SRO. And like even today, this morning, I heard Elizabeth call over the radio. We had a couple of students who were close friends with the student whose father was killed yesterday in the motorcycle crash. And we called in for Dooley, and they were able to offer comfort. He was able to offer comfort and support to those young ladies who were really upset by their friend's loss. So please, I, I'm, you know, stop by, meet him. He's a great dog, German shorthaired pointer. He's so, so sweet, and I think he's going to be really great for us here in the district. So our MTSS team at the middle school looks on data on a regular basis. And before COVID, we looked at data and trends that we saw, and we looked at programming, and we had interventionists come in and talk to us about their programming and what we saw. And then, of course, as we know, spring of 2020, everything changed. So when we came back to school in the fall of 2020, and our students were at home, we really shifted our focus as an MTSS team. In the spring, we basically started meeting virtually every week, and we carried that into the fall. And we realized that we needed to identify things that were happening that we could address right then. So we decided as an MTSS team to have challenges for our students, and then we had culminating events that we titled SMS Live, because we would livestream them here at the middle school on those asynchronous Fridays. So, you know, we had things like a staff obstacle course relay race, where our staff competed. They were dressed in costume. We had staff karaoke, which I'll never forget Cole Hufler belting out some tunes. But our kids loved it, and that's what was most important. And they, you know, they were working towards things, whether it was attendance or, or completion. So as we came back to school, you know, we, we saw, yes, we're still looking at that hard data, but we're also taking in anecdotal data. And we noticed an increase in behaviors as we worked our way through the pandemic, which is something that I'm sure, you know, we all know, it's happening everywhere. You know, I'm still very thankful for our students here in Sycamore, but, you know, some of the videos that were shown from the country across country with, I would say, a decline in behavior probably worldwide in classrooms. So it became clear to us that the answer wasn't just to pile on the reminder points or send kids to Mr. John in 201. But the solution really is found in tier one, which is kind of that, the bulk, the base of our pyramid, right? So you want at least that, that eighty, eighty-five percent of students. But tier one is universal, so it impacts all of our students, and particularly in the area of social emotional wellness. And a couple of weeks ago, we had our TRS meeting that Jim mentioned, and one of our members from the SEL Hub made a statement that really resonated with me. She said, SEL is not adding more to the plate, it is the plate. And I really took that to heart, because I think even as adults, if, if we are not feeling well in all areas, it impacts our daily lives. So when we think about our students coming here, if, if they are suffering in any way socially or emotionally, how can we really expect them to come into a classroom and give their all to, you know, that history lesson, or math, or whatever it is? We really need to address the, the all-around wellness of our students. Okay. So we had a lot of ideas, and we knew we needed to start small. And while we worked away in our brainstorming session, we were able to implement some smaller changes. So for example, when our students come in later, whether it's from an appointment or they're, they're just coming to school late, we have pink passes that the office staff hands them and sends them to classes, you know, kind of admission into class. And we added at the top, we are happy that you are here. And it's something small, I don't even know if the kids really notice, but I just think, you know, to that student who maybe was having a rough morning, if they looked on at their past and see that, you know, we, we just want them to know that we are always happy that they're here. It doesn't matter how late they are or why they're coming in. We, we are just glad they're here. We're glad to see them. We want them in our building feeling welcome. An activity that we did with our staff was we had everyone in the band room, and we had set up on the music stands colored pictures of all of our students. And all staff had a set of red dot stickers. And staff walked around and placed the stickers on the students' faces of students that they had a connection with. And it was incredibly powerful, because as you walked around, you know, what stood out to you? Well, of course, the students who had no stickers. So what we did is we went through and we compiled a list of the students who did not have any red dots. We shared those with teams. And one, one of our seventh grade teams, for example, took that list, and then they started sending out quarterly surveys, SEL surveys, to their students to identify students who were struggling each quarter. And they kind of even changed up their study hall makeups to address that issue. So that was something that we did for staff, and we got a lot of positive feedback about that. And just, it was definitely eye-opening as to, okay, which kids do we need to work very hard to make connections with? Something else we did for our staff was on the February institute day, we were able to set up with Olympia to offer just quick five-minute chair massages. Staff signed up for it. So that was something that was great. Okay, because we also, our staff, we have to take care of our staff, too. During math testing, we had staff who were supervising sessions. And now that we're on an all-school testing schedule, so I was able to throw staff names in a, in a virtual wheel, spin it, and then certain staff were able to have a kind of a free planning period during testing. It's something small, but I mean, you know, to have that, the extra thirty minutes, you know, it, I mean, I think as a teacher, I certainly would have appreciated. So something else we've done is, and again, this is something small, but it really can make a huge impact, is Handle With Care emails. So whether it's Officer Pearson or something that our counseling suite hears about a student, they can just send out an email, and all it has to say is a student's name and Handle With Care, and it alerts staff that something happened. And it, it doesn't matter necessarily the details, but you know that if this student appears to be upset or maybe not as attentive as they normally are, there's a reason why, and just to be aware of their, their well-being and their, their mood. So we've been using that, and it, it has been impactful already. And as MTSS, you know, we, we meet regularly on our Late Start Thursdays, but we also realized that we needed to involve more staff. And so we looked at involving, pulling in our building leadership team, which Elizabeth will talk about.
Yes. So how is, we're going to try to build the foundation here, so you see how this all connects. So building leadership team is something that started a few years ago after we came in as an underperforming school in our IER testing for our students with disabilities, for math specifically. So that's how it started, and it's just kind of taken off from there. We've remained the same core group. There, there have been some changes in and out. But one of our goals focuses solely on improving climate and culture at SMS for both students and staff. It is one of three goals that we work towards. So this is where we insert Significant Seventy-two and the TRSIA, which you're probably like, what are these things? And we're going to go into detail on what they are. But we needed kind of a starting point, and this is how it started. Okay, so connection is not a single act, it is a mindset. I am a visual person, so I did bring the Significant Seventy-two book, just in case you ever see it around. It's become like my school Bible in a way this year. It's a quick read. I would tell anyone that you could probably use it in a lot of workforces, general businesses, too. But it really talks about changing our mindset, right? Like, it's so hard to do that as students and as staff. And so this is not something that changes overnight. This is something that we work towards slowly and surely. Significant Seventy-two is the platform we kind of used to start this ball rolling. I heard, we work very closely with Mimi at the ROE. Have you seen Matt Mimi at the ROE? She's a fabulous human. She works with us, she started working with our building leadership team, and she's kind of become just a resource for us in general. But she had mentioned that she heard about Significant Seventy-two, and it just kind of piqued my interest. So I went, I bought the book, and I read it in like a night, and I came back to our team, and I said, this might be the place we can start. So the entire platform of Significant Seventy-two centers around the first seventy-two hours of school, so the first three days of school. And it's not any content teaching. It is all about expectations and creating relationships. And that is a scary thought to a lot of our teachers, like, what are you talking about? We're not going to go into, you know, they'll do their introduction stuff, but then you want me to do this for three days? And so we knew we had to have a plan, and we knew it had to be pretty precise, and it needed to be vetted. But most importantly, we needed to tell our staff the why. So you can go ahead. Why do we dedicate ourselves to universal relationship building? So this slide has a lot of words on it, but I think they're really important facts for us as a us as we kind of head into what we did. This book talks about Professor John Hattie. I know probably you've heard his name if you've been around education. He identified, he set out to identify strategies and innovations that have had the greatest impact on student achievement in schools. It included over 236 million school age children, over 50,000 educational research studies and 15 years of work. So this is not something that was put together lightly. The outcome was that positive teacher student relationships are the most powerful keys to success in any classroom. Now, when I think about that, I think about myself as a 38-year-old adult who's been working since I've been 16 years old. When, we all have to show up somewhere, right? Like we have to show up to school, we have to show up to work. But what makes that like feel better is that you're going to work with people you really like, right? You're going to see people at school that you care about, you want to, you want to connect with. You want to show up for that person who thinks that you're good enough to show up. And so as an adult or as an 11-year-old, it doesn't really matter. Relationship is key to us coming back and doing this thing over and over again. So Hattie suggested that a student grows .40 of a standard deviation in a typical year of instruction. Teacher-student relationships have an effect size of .72. So if you're a successful, you have a successful relationship with a student, you can almost double what they can do in a school year strictly because of what you do. Now, this could be because I'm a school counselor, right, for 13 years? This is what I do in a nutshell. I do not do anything with my student, my population, without a relationship. We don't get anywhere. And so to me, this speaks volumes. But we still had to kind of sell it to our staff and sell it to our team. So we continued on.
Okay. So here's how it went down. Last year in the spring, we sent about a dozen teachers and we looked at different grade levels, different departments, a draft of the plan with an opportunity to send feedback and ask any clarifying questions. So we sent that out, we took their feedback into consideration, we met, we made some adjustments because we did want staff to have an input on as to what, because again, like Elizabeth said, this was, this did seem daunting to some people and we respected that. So at the end of the year faculty meeting, which was had the last day of staff attendance, we delivered the information that, you know, here's what would be coming. And we also sent emails and Elizabeth sent articles. But we went over more of the details. It's kind of like the official announcement that this is how we were gonna, how we were going to start the year. So the first week of school, students and staff participated in three full days of relationship building and reteaching of expectations. And that took place in every classroom, in every subject, in study calls, in performance music, from the time the students arrived until, you know, the bell rang at 2:30. Within these three days, a connection survey was sent out to our students and it asked them to identify a trusted adult or adults in the building. It asked them about their friends. It asked them to rank their level of stress, to kind of give, assign a number. So we were able to go through those results and get those out to teams so they had an idea of how this new group of students, you know, how they were coming into this new school year. At its conclusion, we surveyed both staff and students about what they felt like, how the first three days went. And our students overwhelmingly had positive feedback and in, in the comments of the survey, we didn't necessarily ask for, but many of them thanked us. They, they said, you know, "Thank you so much for doing this," which, you know, I really appreciated, but I was a little surprised that they were, that they added to that anyway rather than just saying, "Oh yeah, you know, it was, it was fun." Okay, so then from here, you know, what, what happens next?
Can I interject right here, sir? So how much did the kids know about what was going on? Was, I mean, was, was it explained that this was intentional, this period of time for this purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Not, not last year, it was explained at the start of this year.
Right.
Like this is what the next three days is going to look like.
Sure. I have two middle schoolers and when we asked them, you know, "Why don't you have homework?" They're like, "We're not really learning anything right now."
Yeah, well, right.
You know, middle schoolers, like that's as much of a conversation as they want to have with their parents. So I didn't get anything more out of them beyond that. So this is kind of news to me.
Yes. I think another cool thing about that connection survey is that a few of our staff, because we then put the, all the information by team and sent the team all the information that we got. And some of the teachers were like, "I didn't realize that so-and-so thinks that they have a connection with me." And that was eye opening too on the flip side, right? So the dot activity allowed us to see who we need to make a connection with. And this connection survey really allowed us to see who already thinks that they have a connection with us. And to us, it was just, we're doing our job, right? We're just coming to school and we're doing what we, what we do. But to them, it's meaningful enough where they listed you as someone who they have a connection with. So it's, it's cool, full circle. Okay, so what's next? One of the concerns that we had when we sent out the, the prototype, I guess you could call it, was so we do this Significant 72, we spend three days of school building relationships, and then what? Like it just stops. So what can we do to kind of keep this going? So we are continuing Significant 72. It's still called that because it's kind of stuck in the building. And what we did was we created a calendar where the first day of every quarter, we have a shortened schedule and we work to build relationships and revisit expectations. That was laid out for staff at the end of last year. So as they plan for this year, they already know what days that's going to take place. The MTSS team and the Building Leadership Team provide all the activities for those days, so it's not any extra work for a teacher. All they have to do is really deliver the content and buy in, right? They're gonna, they have to be part of this. And the reason we did once every quarter was for our allied arts team who was like, so I dedicate three days of my nine weeks to building relationships with my quarter one kids, but what about quarter two, three, four? And so we didn't, we didn't do three days every quarter, but we thought one day was a, a middle ground and we all agreed on that. So that was the feedback that we got, one of the many things we got that we were able to work with. Through feedback and collaborations, we're working to create sustainable platforms through SMS, hopefully for years to come. I don't think we're going to see this going away. I really don't. We use data on behavior, attendance, grades, map scores, testing and feedback results from both staff and students to figure out what we're doing and how our climate is changing over time. But that's not all, because now we're going to talk about the TRSIA. Oh, that's me again. Okay. So what does it stand for? Trauma Responsive Schools Implementation Assessment. We are one of two schools in DeKalb County to have completed the survey with the Boone Winnebago County SEL Hub. So Boone Winnebago County SEL Hub is a place where they have a bunch of money from the state. They have hired professionals that only work on social emotional learning. We jumped on that train last year, started working with them to figure out how this can impact us in a positive way. And all of their resources are free. So everything they do is free to us. So we started working with them as soon as we could. A lot of this was through Mimi just kind of telling us, you know, that this was available. And that is how we got involved with the TRSIA. So the TRSIA measures eight areas. Our staff at that end of year staff meeting took a survey. It took about 15, 20 minutes. And it spits out this pretty report that tells us where we're scoring in those eight areas. Now from that, we sit down as a team, you can go to the next slide, and we work with their professionals to create X markles and then action plans that align with our results from the TRSIA. We decided, we already had a meeting this year with them, we decided on whole school trauma programming and my classroom behavior management, restorative practices to create a universal trauma responsive staff. It is estimated that in the next two years, every school in the state of Illinois is going to have to have a trauma certified staff. And we are on our way to already becoming that. I think these are big words you're going to hear a lot if you haven't already started to hear. And I feel pretty good about the fact that we're one of the two. We've already had some of our lovelies reach out to us from other schools in DeKalb County to say, "Hey, your name's on this list for TRSIA, like you've already done it, tell us about it, what do you think?" And they're going to jump on board too. So I think you're going to see a lot of DeKalb County start to jump on this as well.
What else?
I know.
All right. So in the meantime, right, while all this TRSIA work is going on, you know, we have made updates to our behavior management system with our reminder points and our recognition. We have our Spartan store up and running, so students can turn in their recognition points to buy things at the store. It's funny how the difference between what the sixth graders are really into and the eighth graders, they just want candy. They just want candy and gone. But the sixth graders are really into these little toys there. And then we are continuing with our second step lessons, the second step curriculum for grades six, seven and eight. But again, I think it is really important to remember that while SEL curriculum is important, it's not, it really can't be instilled into our students just through a curriculum like second step. It really has to be ingrained in who we are and what we stand for in the building, which is why, you know, we're really passionate about Significant 72 and addressing the SEL needs of our students. And in another way we can do that is through restorative practices. And because again, like someone, like we're so grateful for someone like Mimi, we're also grateful to have Beth Fithin-Rider in the building this year as our full-time instructional coach. And she is currently leading a lunch and learn series on restorative practices. We actually had our first session with her today where staff can come, they can earn PD hours, but they're, we're also reading this book and Better Than Carers Are Sick. And staff can also participate in an action learning cycle, completed asynchronously. And the nice thing about the lunch and learn, you don't necessarily have to read this book, which it's a quick read and I highly recommend it for anyone. So anyone can come and be a part of the discussion. And again, that started today and I talked to Beth after and, you know, she, she felt like it went really well. We both attended different sessions and it was, it was great. And, you know, I know there have been presentations on restorative practices before and I'm certainly no expert, so it's something, a goal of mine this year is to become, you know, more well-versed. But basically it's all around repairing relationships and focusing on that repair rather than, you know, punitive traditional discipline, which again, I think for a lot of us is kind of hard to wrap our mind around, well, you know, this kid did, did X, so now the punishment is Z, right? And it's like, we see the data and the research that shows that detentions and in-school suspensions and suspensions, they're not effective. And they really are statistically higher for certain populations, male students, students with disabilities, students of color. And that's, that's the data, you know, nationwide. So we're looking to address that too. We kind of, we put together kind of a flow chart, if you will. So just kind of looking at, you know, here's our tier one universal SEL and, you know, looking at Significant 72, looking at our management system, the TRSIA assessment, moving to restorative practices and then, you know, our second step curriculum that our students get to, get to have as well here at the middle school. We wanted to finish our presentation with something that, something else Mimi has brought to us with CASL, the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. So they have something called SEL Three Signature Practices and they have an entire pamphlet you can print off and, and teachers can use this and it really is supposed to be something that could take just one minute. So Elizabeth will explain that and then that is how we will, before questions.
Yeah. We're going to end it, we're going to make you do it, okay? So this is something we have taught to our teeth, like our staff, like ideas, we give them ideas. What is something you could do that takes a short amount of time, but still elicits feedback and connection? So we're going to ask you to think silently for one minute about one reflection from what we talked about today. Something you appreciated, your biggest takeaway, something you learned, something you want to thank someone for, or something that went really well. And then we're going to, I'm going to pick one person to start and then within a minute, we're just going to keep it going. So when one person finishes, someone else begins. I don't have to lead you in that, but we'll just do it for a minute and then we'll be done. Then you can ask us questions. All right. So you have a minute to think about something that your biggest takeaway, something you're grateful for, something you learned. Okay. I'm going to start with Eric because today Evan and I had a long discussion at lunch about what was the best episode in the season four of Stranger Things. And we did this over lunch. I sat at the table and we all gave our input and I just think he's a fabulous young man. So why don't you go ahead and start?
Well, first I was just fascinated that this even existed because as I said, my kids gave me basically no information that they were going through this other than we don't have homework.
That's true.
But I would say the, the most impactful thing about everything you guys just spoke of was actually the, the red dot exercise. It seems profoundly simple on the one hand, like just tell me who you have a relationship with and we'll figure out who doesn't have one, but at the same time, very impactful. And I'm not sure that a lot of, it takes effort, right, to put that all together, but the results can be profound.
Well, and Elizabeth saw the idea on TikTok.
Of all the ways.
Well, now I hate it.
I know, I know. But I mean, she gets to me and I'm like, we have to do this. I mean, so.
So what I, actually, my kids have been out of school for about 10 years. One went to a small liberal arts college and their first few days of her college experience was just packed with relationship building, with professors, with TAs, with other students. The other one went to a much larger university and those first few days were nothing unless she sought it out. Very different experiences for them. One flew at college, the one, the smaller private liberal arts college. The other one really struggled to find a spot. Once she was able to do that, it was great, but there was nobody to kind of push her to build a relationship and say, "I see you." And to me, that's what this is all about. It creates especially for a school that there's all kinds of new people. It's a new building, there's new teachers. It recognizes that those students are seen and are being listened to and cared for.
Absolutely agree with that. And you're all way too young in this room to remember this, but in my undergrad, I remember seeing a movie called Cypher in the Snow. And it was about a little boy that nobody knew, nobody paid attention to, and he ends up coming off the bus and falling into a snowbank and nobody even knows who he is. And I'm listening to what you're saying and it's like, oh my God, finally, this is, this is so important to get these kids that nobody pays attention to. And, you know, I know for a lot of people not in education, it's hard to believe that there are children that no one pays attention to, but there are lots of children like that. It just warms my heart that you're doing this because it makes such a huge, just what you were saying, it makes such a huge difference when kids, when all you do is say to them, "Hi, how are you? Are you having a great day?" It just, they'll remember that, you know, forever. So thank you is what I want to say for doing this, especially at this age, because I was here many years ago and I wish we had something similar to this because it's so important.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Our minute's up. We're done. Thanks for having us. Any questions? Anything you'd like to know?
I would say I'm glad you're using free resources.
Yes.
That's the surface.
I have been in this business long enough to know.
That's a great way to go for resources. But I think for me, and we hire a lot of people that are engineering, technical type people, and I think the flip side of what you just said, I think all good teachers know you have to build relationships to be a successful teacher in whatever your subject area or strength is. But I hope by us placing value on the importance of building relationships, that the kids actually realize there's value in doing. that the kids actually realize there's value in doing that, that they're not alone, both at their own age level now, six, seven, three, eight grade, but they'll place value on it when they go to high school, when they go to college, when they go to a job. Because you're going to, if you're going to be successful in any profession, you're going to have to build relationships and knowing how to do that and placing value on it, I think is important for them to learn.
I'm waiting for the slightly offensive connection to engineers here. You didn't quite get there. You drew the dotted line right onto it.
I screwed with it. But, you know, they say, uh, uh, he's learning. An extrovert engineer is the one that looks at your shoes instead of his own, so.
No, I appreciate the amount of time you put into the presentation. And, you know, you're trying to implement something big and there's a lot of big ideas, but there's also these small ideas, like you're wording on the pink pass, like, to every individual, everybody's different, but, you know, something very small that can be done can be super impactful and we would, you know, the majority of people would overlook that. And when you're trying to lift something off the ground, you're trying to move the needle, maybe that's not something that's going to really show. I mean, how do you even measure that? Like, you really can't, right? But super easy to implement and maybe that does help somebody to an extent. Maybe they can't even articulate the fact that it helped them, but maybe it sets a tone for the rest of the day. So I think that that's a, that's, it's, it's cool to see it at a, at a micro level as well. And I think that, that can get overlooked as you try to implement something.
Yeah, it was just such an easy change. I mean, we just...
Sure, sure. Yeah, and that's another part.
You know, and that's, but I mean, like you said, it can really have an impact even if it is on just one kid.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next item is open discussion, issues, observations, questions.
I was hoping to have a bit of a conversation about graduation date. At our last meeting, a graduation date was proposed and recommended for our approval. I assumed, and perhaps wrongly, that that date had been vetted. And if there were conflicts with that date, that we'd be made aware of them. I was not aware of the conflicts and so hence are my vote for approval of that date. I was made aware of the conflicts the next morning when parents contacted me, both through email and phone calls. And an interesting thing happened. I actually found myself defending the vote and the administration for bringing the date forth. And then the more I talked and listened, I realized, no, wait a minute. This, this is wrong. What happened was wrong. If I had known about the conflicts, I would have asked more questions. I would have, at least tonight, voted differently. I think graduation, there's always going to be conflicts. Not every family, not every student is going to be able to make it on a Sunday. Perhaps there's family conflicts with that Sunday date. I think the difference for me is that this is a IHSA state sanctioned event that we're asking our students and their families to choose between that and their graduation. And to me, that's just wrong. We should represent and value our relationship with our student athletes, whether it's one of them or a team of them, and allow them to succeed at both that event as well as be present at graduation and not ask them to try to juggle both things in basically probably less than a 12-hour time span. So I don't know how to proceed from here, but I feel like my vote is, was just not done in good faith because I didn't have all the details.
I couldn't agree more. And I'll tell you, when I started in this district, we had graduation on the football field and the weather came into, to view and then we had it in the high school gym. And when the field house became open, that was like, oh, my God, we have this humongous, wonderful building. So to me, I agree with what Chris is saying and I think if we had known more information, I'm not faulting anybody. I'm just saying if we knew more information, maybe we would have made a wiser decision. But the field house, I mean, to me, it's always been a lovely, huge building. It doesn't have air conditioning, but they, there's air moving. The only drawback is you can't have as many people. So that might be just a, a little difficulty. But, you know, we're here for children. We're here for kids. We're here for why they are around. Their whole, their whole life, they're looking toward graduation. That's the pinnacle of their, of their high, of their educational experience. So to me, I agree with Chris, however, we can talk about this and maybe change some things. I'm not trying to make anybody feeling, you know, the decision that was made, we're, we're just all in here. It's just that we really didn't know a lot about what was going on. So for that, I apologize and, you know, I would, I would certainly want to do something to me and change my vote as well.
I'm interested in just knowing what other options there are at this point in time with what we know and what we've done. So, you know, in terms of feelings and opinions, I agree with Chris and Jolene. I think ideally, you know, we would have all students present, not have a conflict. At the same time, out of fear of making a decision without having all the information again, it'd be nice to be able to say, okay, well, right now, given the current climate, the current setting, what are our choices? And then we can, as a board, weigh those at this point with this information, so.
I'm going to jump in for just a second because I was just going to ask you.
You can speak to that.
Yeah, I've had a conversation with Mr. Carlson about that. We believe that, we know that we can tell NIU that we don't want to use the convocation center, which is what it would come down to. Not 100% sure of the ramifications of that. We've got a good relationship with NIU. And sometimes, as you guys know, there's a policy that's black and white, but there can be some flexibility. So there's a conversation that would need to happen with NIU. Field house is the only option at this point. You know, so moving into a Sunday at the field house is, is something that can be done. So there's kind of two parts from, from my perspective. One is revisiting this decision for this year. But then I would ultimately seek some guidance from the board. I think Chris alluded to this, or maybe, or maybe Jolene did. You know, a date or venue or time will be perfect for everybody. And the board and the administration has to accept that at some point, somebody's not going to be happy with the, the final decision. That doesn't necessarily need to be made tonight. But what I would seek, and I think, you know, even though our beloved Mr. Carlson is nearing the end of his glorious career, we would want to know for, for future, is it Sunday period? Whether it's field house or convocation center? So ultimately, that's a question I would ask the board for, for the longer term. But for the shorter term, we believe that we could manage getting out of the contract with NIU for Friday night, May 26th, and move it back to the field house on Sunday.
But you're saying it would affect future opportunities at the convocation center?
Well, you know, schools re-up their contracts. That's not going to happen for the next 100 years. At some point, there will be a, a change. And what we can do is, and Mr. Carlson has already communicated this to NIU, we want the Sunday date. That's preferred. That's why we didn't bring the date to the board prior to the, the last meeting, which we were waiting to see if there would be some sort of, of change. There wasn't, so that's one of the reasons that we moved forward with the Friday evening date. We would continue to communicate with NIU. This is the date it would like. If we can get it, great. Then we can have a convocate, or a conversation about that because there has been some concern about not doing graduation at the field house. Opinions will be divided about that as well. No right answer. So ultimately, that's a decision, too. But we can continue to communicate with NIU, ask for, for a Sunday date at the convocation center if it becomes available. I would recommend that we sign on the dotted line to hold it until we make a final decision because that date won't last long. We have a conversation about that and then move forward. But I think, first of all, it can be changed. We can move it to Sun, uh, Sunday at the field house for this year. And then I would encourage us to have a longer-term conversation about what day and then the venue.
Not to make light of this, but I can speak to kind of the situation that you're in, Steve. And like, you know, when you make a dinner reservation, I've, I've been in situations where we'll go, we'll take what we can get. We'll take the 4:30 seating for two. We have six people. And then you hope you can get better. So I'm happy to know that right now, the decision that was made is not immovable, set in concrete. You know, we're able to take in more information and, and make another decision in response to that. But to the tune of this piece, yeah, I would support then, given the public's opinion, doing Sunday at the field house and then having an open conversation about future decisions, so.
I guess I would just ask, are we aware of any conflicts, any pre-existing conflicts over the past decade plus for that Sunday time? I mean, are we aware that historically, there's always been a group of people that can't make it on Sunday, whether that's one person or 10? And I, and I raise it from the standpoint of, I do agree with you that I don't think there's any perfect date. And I was one of the people that responded that, I, I have never had a high school student. I'll have one, you know, next year. So I'm not aware of all the IHSA stuff and looked at their calendar and went, you know, oh, my goodness, there is something every day of that month except Sundays. For May and June, it doesn't matter what sport you pick, every day of the month has something going on. So avoiding conflict seemed hard and I was a student athlete, so I get, and we mentioned it earlier today, there are sacrifices. You're going to miss certain school sanctioned events because, you know, you've, you've made that commitment to the, to the team. And I'm not trying to say we're going to pick on any sport or student or discriminate in, in any way. And we had this precedent that we had graduation on Sundays. And so maybe that group of people that knew they had conflicts on Sundays just never said anything because that's how we've always done it. Well, now we've opened up that, you know, Pandora's box and said, well, we could move graduation to Friday night. So now if we move it back, is a new group going to emerge that says, well, we had a conflict Sunday. We were really happy to hear that you, you moved it. And that's what our next meeting is. That's all I want to know. Again, knowing that any decision we make could put somebody in that position of being, well, shoot, now my family can't make it in or, you know, such, I'm just curious.
I think, so for me, I'm all aware of families that had conflict with our graduation when it was on a Sunday. So I actually talked to one of the families that called me and I said, I'm pretty sure we both knew a family that when our kids were graduating, they had a child graduating from college on the same day as Sycamore's graduation. And they ended up splitting their families so that there was family at both graduation ceremonies. So I think there's always a conflict and it would be wrong for us to ever come up with a date that there isn't. For me, the difference is this is a high school event. And where we, as a board, have stressed to our students that we want them to be involved in the activities, sports, music, whatever it may be, art, and we want them to be successful in school. And here's the culmination of those two things. And we're now going to go, yeah, but you know, can't you make this seven-hour drive and make it work? Because this is really when we want to have graduation. Just seems like we're just missing the point.
Right, well, I'm just playing dumb, let's just say if we move it back to Sunday, is there another group where we're doing that same thing, too?
Another group with a school thing.
Yeah, is, is there an FFA event? I mean, there's so many things going on at the high school. I just don't know. I'm just asking broadly.
I'm not aware of any school-related event that takes place on. We avoid Sundays like the plague.
I get, there's families that we can't control.
Okay.
You don't have families that have other commitments.
Right.
You can't, you can't schedule it on the family.
I think the only thing that, to be aware of is that earlier Sundays in the month could potentially be, you know, conflicts because...
Travel.
You know, teams are still in season, whether it's...
The morning of the day gives you an extra day of travel.
Yeah, I mean, the, but when you're, if we do it in-house at the field house, we've got control over what the Sunday is, so it makes it a little bit easier. I'm not aware of any school-related conflicts on a Sunday, but I would be remiss if I didn't because you'll get the email. I'll get the email. I'll get the call. You'll get the call. I don't know. I can't guarantee it's going to happen, but we should all be prepared for somebody to come forward with, you know, concern. So it, it's about weighing, and I think, you know, your point and, and the point made tonight about a school-related activity has ways that needs to be considered. So, end of the day, everybody needs to know that when we make this decision, somebody's not going to be happy. We'll, we'll, we'll have to live with that. We live with that all the time. Those of you that have been on the board for a while, 20-plus years in administration, it's just the way that it works.
I've never quite understood what the convocation center lure is. I always enjoyed it at the field house. It's run efficiently. It's like an hour and 15 minutes. You're in, you're out, three songs, live speeches, everyone hits their name, then boom, boom, boom. I don't know what the lure, I don't like St. Charles. The rest of them drive all the way out here for that, to be honest with you. And I, I think that's probably the thing that, that it was more an issue for me. Everyone else seemed to like the convocation center. I don't feel one way or the other way, strong or weak about that. But I did like the fact that when both of my kids graduated, we could walk out and take a picture under the sign and hang out on the field and those types of things that you don't get, even if they give you extra time at the convocation center. It's not Sycamore. For me, that was the more moving comment. I had a state, both my kids went to state track, too, but girls is a different weekend than boys. It would have affected my son, absolutely. I get that. He would have had to shut, we probably would have shutted back and forth and probably wouldn't have performed as well. So I get that, but...
I always thought that sentimentality about having it at the field house was my gray hair and my age. And a few years ago, I said on the logo committee, the Spartan had logo committee, and as Niff will attest, I fought to the end about having a little bit of purple added to that Sycamore leaf because it tells a bit of our history and I didn't want to let it go. And I think the students that were in the room with us were like, oh, my gosh, woman, shut up. And that's how I feel about the field house. I didn't, I didn't want this to become a discussion between Cabo and field house because I feel like it's, there's such a bigger issue here. But yeah, I would love to see it back on our campus, in our field house, by our fields.
I know it's not an action item right now. Can't do, can't do any voting today.
Steve, would you be able to confirm that, yes, we'd still be able to livestream? And yes, we have a decent process in place in regards to the shifting of tickets and availability for some of those people that are, not every person is bringing, you know, multiple people. And also, not every person is only bringing one person, so. Yeah, so the only thing I can confirm is that we have the same capabilities that we had three years ago. Sure, sure. You know, we have technologically speaking, we, we had Spartan TV before. We've got Spartan TV now. The, the one difference there is that, you know, we're not streaming that on a free YouTube channel in NTHHS for a variety of reasons. So if somebody wants to watch the livestream, they have to watch it on that. Maybe we can get around that. I mean, we're, we're ways out and this is kind of off the cuff. But, you know, in terms of ticketing and all the other stuff, the same number of seats. You know, the tickets are going to be handled the, the same way. And, you know, understandings each family gets an allotment and then there are some tickets that are available and after that. So all, all I can guarantee is that we've got the same capability we did three years ago. And having not been here then, so, you know, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, I don't need to labor it, but yes, these students representing themselves, their families and, you know, in front of their jersey or uniform that says Sycamore, maybe they're representing the district, so. It's always a little bit different for me than some of the, some of the other events. Totally get a lot of different reasons that I'm sure the people would love to not have it on a Sunday. Certain families out there for their own personal reasons, but these are student athletes that are, I'm not trying to just be pro-sports or whatever, but like, they are representing the district. I mean, and the school, like, we should take that into consideration. It's just my point.
For all the controversial things we've had to deal with the last three years, I can't say any of those went without at least one, one email on the other side. I have not gotten many communications saying, no, keep it on Friday because we hate it Sunday. So for what that's worth, all the data points have been...
Well, that's partially because nobody knew it was an issue or just the group that it affected knew it was an issue. The, you know, the student body at large didn't know that, so.
Potentially, but they, I mean, there was conversation online about, I'm sure, the word would come down by now.
Now, everybody knows.
So I'm, I'm fine with moving the date if that's where we're moving it, when it's that time.
But what I can do is if the board directs me to work with Mr. Carlson, the high school administration, begin making plans to do that, we can put it on the, the agenda for the next meeting.
That's exactly what I was going to say. So you took the words right out of me. I think you have the direction. I mean, it seems like everyone would agree that you should proceed in that manner. Maybe get Chauncey involved, too.
Yeah, he has been. He's been in the conversation thus far. And, I mean, he'll have to be involved to plan it, to pull it off in the field house, but yeah.
Yeah, you also should be aware of any conflicts that might be out there with other, with other groups that students belong to.
He, he was and, and to Steve's point, some families would have made that trip, you know? It's not ideal. I get it. Lived in a situation where those trips had to be made for a period of time personally. Doesn't mean that that was the justification. Doesn't mean that that was the justification for me, but Chauncey was aware, and he was part of the conversation. He advocated for the track athletes, but also understood that this is a large decision that impacts a lot of the students. So I had a good conversation with Chauncey, and I know Mr. Carlson spoke with him as well.
And I just want to say that I do wish that when there are issues like that, even though you as administrators might resolve them among yourselves and have a recommendation, it would be nice to know beforehand that those exist, so that we can take them into account before we vote.
Yeah, and I apologize...
And I have a situation like this.
I apologize for not providing that information and not giving more background. Ultimately, Mr. Carlson did the legwork on the recommendation, but it was my recommendation to make it, so that's my responsibility. So I apologize to the board and to the community members that are here for that.
Okay, well, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. Other issues, questions, discussion items? Any future agenda items other than what we've already talked about? The meeting is near, so...
They are... One of the meetings in October, October 11th, yeah. But, you know, we've talked about that for a long time. Yes, and it was summer. And then we approached the nurses about when they wanted to be here, and after they asked to put it off till October, so they will finally make their appearance on October 11th.
Good.
Which is at...
Very good.
The school in North Grove.
North Grove. Any other future agenda items?
Yeah, there was some talk earlier in the month about softball diamond stuff, is that gonna be included in that list of project prioritizations that we talked about as a future?
Yeah, we would like to move forward with upgrades, or working with Park District to construct a... They have one diamond that's kind of... It's not really a diamond right now. It's based at one of their diamonds to construct a softball diamond. We've got some leftover funds. Actually, we whittled that down a little bit in talking with Chauncey recently. Joe Carpenter has done some fundraising, so some of the contingency money from the construction projects, because Mark Extra did a good job with construction. We can build that field out there. That is part of the projects that we'd like to move forward with. If we'd like to discuss that at a future meeting, we can do that, certainly.
Your last communication said it was gonna be on the agenda for tonight, so I would apologize. Have any... All of this construction stuff, as we've learned, you know, tonight from Mark, there's obviously a lot of priorities in there, and I think that warrants a prioritization discussion.
I would, if we're gonna do that, I would recommend that we kind of look at the whole list and see where that fits with everything.
That's what you're suggesting, right?
Yeah.
Other future agenda items? Am I hearing them?
All right. Need a motion then to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, student discipline, matters related to individual students, purchase or lease of real estate, and imminent litigation.
Second.
Moving second at roll call?
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Dombeck?
Yes.
We will retreat to executive session and then come back down to open session for our final... Are we good?
Good to go.
All right, we're back in open session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Second.
Moved in second at roll call?
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dombeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
The move second. Hi.
All right. Opposed? You are adjourned.